I will, I will, I got it, but we gotta start now. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council, your city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the robe?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Voice.
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by Council, Councilmember Ward Four, Belinda Creighton Smith.
Please join me in the presence of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as approval of minutes of the January twenty first, twenty twenty five regular council session as proposed.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda, I am going to have the Waterloo Youth City Council come up before public comments for our annual swearing in. So, Mrs. Luce, would you please have everyone join?
Wow. There's so many of them. That's so great.
They look like a bowling team.
Yes.
Do you want them up there now, or would you prefer?
Well, right now, I'm wondering, well, we got the mic here, so how many are speaking?
Myself, and then our mayor. But our mayor can speak upfront if you would like.
So.
How would you like this, Mayor Hart?
Come on up.
It's good, they're all coming up. Come on.
Thank you.
I think that's cool.
Thank you.
I'm happy.
Come on, business cards.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
You can stand behind us, too.
Let's have those that may be closer to the earth stand in front. And then, if you could step all the way back to the, to the, so those that, those that are closer to the earth, if you wanna, well, if we turn sideways, well, I don't know, we probably should have. So could I have some of you come over here, please? And then, if I could have you, please step back, and you two, you two, ma'am, step on this way, so that they can see up here. So if you, because this isn't for pictures yet, so if you wanna, you three, you three wanna just move in or step behind someone, so that we can have the audience be able to see and the camera could somewhat see perfection. All right, Mrs. Luce.
Thank you, Mayor Hart, and elected, I can't see you, but elected council members, and to your staff. It's nice to see you all here today. Who we are, we are the Waterloo, no, we are your Waterloo Youth City Council. We're made up of twenty-eight students from four area high schools in one of the most diverse and ninth-largest city in Iowa. Iowa Waterloo population, I may be off here a little bit, but seventy thousand one hundred and fifty, is made up of seventeen percent African Americans, with growing Latino, Condoleezza, and Burmese population, among others. There are forty-five different languages spoken in the Waterloo schools. And your Waterloo Youth City Council is representing our diverse community. Mayor Hart, this was your initiative. This is going on our seventh year. Seven years. With your blessing and your support. There are only five youth city councils in the state of Iowa. Most cities have a youth advisory team, but I was told by Sioux City to state it with your city, Waterloo Youth City Council. To update you, you have inspired, and I have had the privilege to work with over a hundred and eighty students who have represented our diverse community. Our meetings are run most, like yours, with Robert's Rules. We do have an agenda at every meeting. Students, selected committees, and Mayor Hart, you'll find this interesting, that our very first student, our Waterloo Youth City Council, those members have graduated from college this last year. And we have one of our alumni here today. Would you please stand? And she will be graduating from college this year. Our students formed bylaws, they wrote their own bylaws, they review their bylaws, and they make changes. We have a marketing team that works on Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok. We have a community committee who helps host volunteer opportunities, youth scholarships, and highlight what's going on in your city. We have a budget committee who work on reviewing grants. We have the privilege of working with the Waterloo Community Foundation, and this will be the first year that your Waterloo Youth City Council will be reviewing scholarships for the Mother Moon Award. Quite an honor for your Waterloo Youth City Council. In twenty eighteen, the mayor gave us some outcomes. We have met every single outcome that the mayor had asked us to meet. We look at opportunities in our community, and after COVID, we selected our focus, which was youth mental health. We worked with our elected officials, and we backed a House File Bill six oh two. And for two years, we advocated to get this bill passed. And you will be proud to know that the bill did pass, but it helps over five hundred thousand youth, not just in Waterloo, but five hundred thousand across the state of Iowa. I just got statistics from Your Life Iowa stating, "I remember the first contact back in twenty twenty-two, and I applaud the work of those students that helped make this happen." The fact that we have around three thousand contacts from students last year demonstrates the success of their work. So for those of you that don't know what happened, is the bill got passed, and on the back of every high school student ID card is information to connect them to Your Life Iowa, and they can do it immediately. So, folks, check your student ID cards. All right. We've sponsored and trained over seventy-five youth and citizens on suicide prevention. And tonight, some of you have received a flyer about the very first QR, QPR training that will be held February twenty-eighth at the Waterloo Center for the Arts, and you're all welcome to town. I've reached out to your fire department. Hope to see some. The police department, hope to see some. And all you community citizens sitting here tonight, you are more than welcome to attend. This is the first time that a QPR training will be led by these students. We were also asked to present in Las Vegas in twenty twenty-three at the Carisola's Mental Health Summit. So your Waterloo Youth City Council has gone across the United States to tell their story. You should be proud. Last year, we took eight students to Washington, D.C., and this year, we didn't meet the goal, but we sure hope that we'll able to take students next year. It is quite an expense, but we hope with the support of the city and some great donors that we would be able to attend. In order for the students to go, they have to have been in for two years and serve in a leadership role. You will also note, Mayor Hart, that it's interesting that we are starting to see students who represent a family. So I know that we have, how many here upfront that your older brother or sister was in the council? Raise your hand. High, so they can see. So you see, it works. We're spreading the word. The historical tour was a huge success, and Dr. Belinda Creighton Smith, I wish you could have attended with us. It was sold out. We had a bus full of community students and youth that wanted to learn the history of Waterloo. And at that time, we went to the oldest standing school building, which at this time, I'd like Mr. Noel Anderson to step forward. When the students went two years ago, they felt that building needed to be stated to our community that it is one of the oldest standing Waterloo Community School Building. They arranged to have a plaque made, and I'm turning this over to Noel to find out, the building is no longer owned by the city, I mean, by the Waterloo schools. It is owned by an individual, and I have tried several times to make contact, and you said you'd be able to get that done for me. So I appreciate that you do that. And again, Mayor Hart, your Waterloo Youth City Council wanted to make sure that that building got recognized. How many here get the Des Moines Register? And on Sunday, in there was an article called Iowa Youth Stuck in a Maze Trying to Find Mental Health Care. We, the Waterloo Youth City Council, is still working on youth mental health. In particular, we're looking at the anti-violence. And so we are working closely with safe neighborhoods and trying to start there. But then we will go to Des Moines to advocate for more funds for services that directly affect youth and their mental health. You should be proud, Mayor Hart. You should be proud. And at this time, I would like to make sure that we can get some sort of financial support from the city. Every time I go out and when I write my grants, they ask, "How much do you get from the city?" And I say, "We get a lot of great in-kind," but we need to, if you want it to continue, because seven years, we gotta get on the books. So with that, I thank you for the honor to lead this group, and I turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm Benjamin Ritter. I got a few words. I'm the mayor of the Waterloo Youth City Council. This is my third year and the final year on council, which is sad. Having previously been the chair of the community and the mayor prosem, Waterloo Youth City Council has offered me many volunteer opportunities, such as a community yoga event, volunteering at mental health breakfast, and a trip to Washington, D.C. to share the great work we have done over the years. That is just a little bit of what we have done. Our biggest project, while Ms. Luce have already stated, was being on the council and passing the House File six oh two in Iowa. I would like to thank Mayor Hart and Carol Luce for creating such an amazing program, program that has inspired me to keep doing great work in our community. Waterloo Youth City Council wouldn't be possible without Mayor Hart. Thank you, Mayor Hart. My hope is that this opportunity can continue to be funded so that the youth of Waterloo can continue to use their voices to make positive change for Waterloo. Also, Ms. Luce, thank you for being my, bringing me right into the group on my first year of council. Make me feel very welcome. Your guidance and your spirit is like no other. To my fellow Waterloo Youth City Council members, thank you for giving your full effort to make a change in our community and state. Without, without hard work and dedication, we wouldn't have accomplished all that we have. To all the other Waterloo Youth City Council staff members, thank you for all your efforts to help guide us in the right direction. Lastly, I'd like to extend an invitation, like Ms. Luce has already done today. Our Waterloo Youth City Council is hosting, along with Alive and Running, a suicide prevention event at the end of this month. The training is called QPR, which stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer. This event will be held February twenty-eighth from eleven thirty a.m. to one p.m. at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. Again, on my behalf of the Youth City Council, I would like to thank Mayor Hart and the council members for empowering our youth to make a change for our future. Thank you.
So I'm, I am not going to get emotional before a council meeting, right? It'll be a long meeting for all of us, but I just want to say to Carol, thank you so much. You and Jim Day, working together, getting this started, and for your continuation on with this. I think you're gonna retire about four times. But it's always good to work with somebody that is purpose and mission-driven, because you see the bigger picture, you see the impact it has on the lives of our young people in the community. And one reason for this program is because I'm sick and tired of people saying that our youth don't have all the tools necessary to be able to change the world. And so that's behind making sure also that when our young people leave here, you guys know that you are valued and you are appreciated. All the way from Stanford to St. Ambrose, I walked into St. Ambrose, and in the president's office, Haley was working in there, and she was able to help us to help my son to move forward in college. So all around this country, you guys are engaged, you guys are changing the world, you're changing the state, and we thank you so much for all your incredible efforts, and we all believe in you. And what Carol's mentioning, mentioning as well, the funding for it, we haven't come to the city council because at the time, when it was first created, some, some believed that it wasn't the responsibility of the city to do it. And so I've been able to work with a fund that was created called Believe Waterloo in addition to other philanthropic sources and people that have come along to help support this program. You know, it's life-changing when our youth can go to Washington, D.C. and see how legislation is made and advocate on behalf of all the youth across the state and country. It's, it's changing for them to be able to go to Des Moines. And, and one year, you created a training called the Five, was it Five Minute Advocate, where you taught our young people, along with the speaker, on how to become effective advocates for what they need to have, but also to teach them how to disagree without being disagreeable, which is something that all of us can learn from our young people. So I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to our president and to all of our youth here. I want to thank the city council for believing in this program and the entire community as well, so.
I also feel we need to thank the parents.
Yes. No, wait, wait, wait. Parents don't. Could all of you give a round of applause to all the parents here? And school support, too. There's people that are working within our schools to be able to help. Could you wave your hands? So show who you are. We want to.
Joe and Mr. Riley from East High School. There is a rep from, from Columbus that's not here, and then also one from West.
All right, so we want to thank everyone involved in, in, in this program as well. And I have the very important task this evening to swear in all of you at the same time. So now, if all of you want to come out along here, and if you want to come over here, and Tara, if you want to go to the, you may have to step outside and come to the middle so we can get everyone. I always use it on landscapes, so I can get everyone, but you're a portfolio person, that's. But look, so I'm gonna ask all of you to raise your right hand. And I want you, I'm gonna say aye, then you say aye, and then repeat your name, and then repeat after me after that, okay? It's kind of confusing. So is aye, Mr. Ritter. Mr. All right, so we got it. And then repeat after me, but you say your own individual name. So are we ready? All right, aye. Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of Iowa. And I will faithfully and impartially. To the best of my ability. Discharge all the duties. Of the office of. The Waterloo Youth City Council member. And the city of Waterloo. Blackhawk County, Iowa. As now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations. Now, I would like the Waterloo City Council really quickly, if you would come out and stand. I don't know how we're going to do this, but everybody's.
I'm good, I think.
Yeah, if you want to kneel down, if you're up front, take a, take a knee. My knee is gonna work the way it used to. So, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two. All right, thank you.
You did great.
Thank you, Mayor Hart.
Thank you. We will, I assume.
This part-time job has turned into a full-time job.
There's good benefits.
Dave, I swiped it.
No comment.
Swiped it.
Look at it.
I know. I wish you would have never said anything about it.
Mrs. Luce, we, we will wait till you, if folks that are taking off, we will wait for you guys to take off. Mr. Ritter, nice to see you, sir.
Was that the biggest group that they've had, you know, Mayor? That's great. That's beautiful. I should tell Ms. Carol that I'll do them some headshots. I'll go over there and do them some headshots. That's cool.
A student worker in the president's office. Haley was. All right, it is now time for oral presentations. Your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
I'm Mary Potter. I'm on the Grouse Board, and I have with me Margaret.
I have not seen people get up that fast in my life, so I haven't seen anyone get up that fast in my life, so.
They have to leave for dinner.
I'm talking about you.
That was a tough act to follow, you know. Anyway. Tonight, I have to introduce you to a man who has a very special place at the Grouse. This is Benjamin Miller, and he does wonderful things with his hands. He doesn't like to speak, but he does marvelous things. The other night, we went to a planetarium for all members for free, and we got to watch, they had a program, Voices of Iowa, D-Day. And I had heard that when this took place, people came out of there crying, and I thought, not me, no possible way. I came out with tears. It's something you should all be seeing. It talks about D-Day, and it tells people how important it is that we support the people who are our veterans, those who have made our world a better place for being here. At this time, I'm going to have Margaret Moy give you a little more information.
Thank you, Mary. I'm here to affirm that our new planetarium show is thanks to our Director of Education. He's just one example of our very talented staff that we have at the Grouse. He's able to utilize his skills with multimedia, just as all of our staff utilizes the wide range of skills that they bring to the table to provide wonderful content for our community. So Voices of Iowa is our oral history archive of interviews from veterans, as well as farmers and other local interest communities. And we created a planetarium show that we now can offer to the public as a planetarium-only ticket. So that's something that we incorporated to accommodate for the show. So if you've been to the Grouse here recently, if you've already seen the D-Day exhibit, go ahead and still come and purchase a planetarium-only show ticket. This show is being played on Friday afternoons at three p.m. and on Saturdays at one thirty p.m. This show is being played on Friday afternoons at 3:00 PM and on Saturdays at 1:30 PM. But this is in commemoration of the 80th anniversary of D-Day. So we have a temporary exhibit up through the end of May where that, which this show supplements. But then we'll also continue playing it because it is so important. This is the 80th anniversary of the end of World War II. The fact that we are in Iowa's only designated National World War II Heritage City. It's just an important story to, to keep alive. And the voices that you hear in this show are from the men and women, men in this case, but who survived D-Day and you hear it from their own voice. We do encourage and recommend that this is a 13 and older show, not because it's graphic, but because it is very emotional hearing the stories directly from the veterans who survived. But we want to thank you very much for the opportunity to share this new opportunity with our community. Planetarium only tickets are now available, $8 for adults. And if you are a veteran, it is a $5 ticket. So thank you very much.
You don't have to just come to that one for Benjamin's works, but they have a lot of these throughout the year and they had a Valentine one that was super duper. They had a scary Halloween one. So when you see something that is going to be in the planetarium, be sure you go. And this man stays at the very back very quietly, but he does a marvelous job putting it together. Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. And thank you for all your work as well.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond. And I'm going to say, AKA, modern day slave. And what I came to talk about is what you were just talking to the junior council about was the importance of the constitution and the power of it. And some of us in the last two weeks have seen something that probably you didn't like with the constitution, with the pardon power, to be able to pardon people for a president. What I'm here on is when the constitution is not in effect for all. And there's a big difference in case MHO 13288 and case FCR 256356. You familiar with that, Mayor? Yeah, that case right there, in my case, I went to the police, had a meeting downstairs, told them about I was getting threats on my life, my children's life, and referred back to it being on the case 9914612, where a person went in the restroom and pretty much raped my daughter and sent a message to me based on John Deere life insurance policy and some stock. In the case that I just mentioned, and with that, after I had the meeting with them, I was put in a psychiatric setting and said that I was seriously mentally impaired. That's what Kellyanne LaCarre said on the 14th of February, 2013. On the 18th, George Snigler said they found me to be seriously mentally impaired. The first psychiatrist said, when I got to short or over here at the hospital on the west side, I hadn't been in a hospital since 85, so I hadn't had no history of anything, no medications or nothing. What he told me was, Mr. Roberts, I don't know what they're trying to do to you, but if I was you, when I get out, I'd get a lawyer and sue the bastard. These are the applications that I put in for jobs. And it's 17 on each one of these. I have contacted the same amount of lawyers. That's why I said due process equal fair protection under law, I meant black ball. In the case that I just mentioned, it was Tyler Hunter Young on September 23rd or 24th, engaged in a course of conduct directed towards Quentin, excuse me, Quentin Hart, that was a cause of resemble person to feel, a reasonable person would feel terrorized, frightened, intimidated, threatened to the fear of a person intends to cause bodily harm or to do death to a member of his family. I've been telling y'all the same thing even before you. You approached your situation with your police and Brian Williams than different than you do mine. And what I'm here to say is that my constitutional rights under the 14th amendment, then the second amendment by them hit me with that. When you put, when they put the MHO on me, a mental health thing, and I still can't shake that. So I'll be back and I'm going to touch more on the farm and how this constitutional is. So have a good night.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, Lori Wright, 4009 Mark Drive, Waterloo. I'm here to comment about Miriam's Park. It's located in the 3800 block of Sager Avenue, adjacent to our new high school. The park board approved the Waterloo Schools Plan for a service road to run through Miriam's Park and a 5.2 acre land transfer. There's opposition to save the park. 320 signatures were collected so far in opposition to the road and delivered to the city clerk's office last week for your review. The need for infrastructure is understood, as is the importance of a quality education for our students. We hope that both can happen without using Miriam's Park. Miriam's is a beautiful tree-lined green space. She's unique and has a special vibe all her own. The park is heavily used by our neighborhood families and she gets visitors from all over the community. In 1963, Aaron Miller donated 7.2 acres of Miriam's land to the Waterloo Park Board, not the road department or any other entity, but the park board donated as a memorial to his late wife, Miriam. Because of Aaron's forward thinking, we have a neighborhood park. And it's our only neighborhood park within walking distance for our large and growing neighborhood. The concerns that led to the petition are the traffic, safety, pollution, noise, loss of valuable green space and shade. And how much concrete can this area endure at one time? Studies show physical and mental health benefits to parks. And Miriam's is attractive to home buyers, grow Cedar Valley. And what does our city gain from giving the park land away? Well, we gain massive amount of concrete, noise, pollution, traffic and possible street adjustments. And what do we lose? We lose the trees, grass, nature, shade, Miriam's vibe, along with a ton of land. We, the park started out with 17 acres and now the school wants five acres, leaving us with a teeny weeny two acres. Now, in closing, back in 1978, First Ward Councilman Extraordinaire Jack Rohr saved that park from development. According to his quote in the Waterloo Courier, "The park should be preserved because of future residential development in the area and in the future the park will be small compared to the residential area out there." Thank you, Jack. As petition signers, we respectfully ask the city council to consider alternatives for the proposed road that do not include the loss of parkland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dennis Jewell, I live at 3905 Sager Avenue. I talked with Jamie Knudsen recently about the traffic study. And I got to thinking about this last spring, maybe. There was a guy out there putting up some lights or some cameras at the intersection of Progress and Green Hill. They were up for about two days and I recall they were probably in the weekend time. I asked if the city had taken into consideration the projects and in just across the border in the Cedar Falls and the road Sager, they're extending it to it. There's going to be 43 homes in there in the first edition. And to the west of that, there's going to be a five-plex of apartments of about 200 units. And there's going to be one road for those people in those apartments to get from their apartments onto Cedar Heights. The rest of them are going to have to come the other way. And I said, let's do some forward thinking on this and let's act accordingly. Let's think ahead. Let's not wait five, 10 years down the road when we have problems with traffic to do something about it. You have the chance to do it now. Tell the city or tell the schools to look at an alternate route. There's got to be some other ways. And when we attended the meetings that the Vision Architect had at the different schools, they showed that they have a plan for a bus loop coming off of Huntington Road, going up there, dumping this, letting the students out and going out another way. And the same thing for picking them up. We don't need buses coming down through there and we don't need that road. There's got to be some other ways to deal with that if there is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Connie Rommel, 439 Sager. I'm one lot line from the Cedar Falls city limits on Sager. Traffic, traffic is busy enough on Sager right now without the added traffic that will come from the school. Plus we have 43 plotted lands, like Danny was saying, east of me that are going now. The roads are already in. Then they're putting up a five, 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 uh, plexes with 33 units in, 195 more units. So that's 238 possible vehicles coming out of that area onto Sager, either going out to Green Hill or going down to Progress and going out Progress. Think we have enough traffic there with that, let alone bringing the school's traffic out from the school. The other thing is losing, losing that park because there is no other park for all these kids and all these units to go to. We need to keep, keep that green space and don't put that road back through there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Jo Jewell, 3905 Sager Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of the kids to be a voice for them. They come past our house on their bikes. They're excited. They love to go down to the park. If you put that where they're saying to put the road in, they're going to have to go over that road to get to the park equipment. These little kids, they aren't going to have a chance with buses and big trucks. Many parents, grandparents walk their children to the park and many love to play out in the green space. And along the one area, there's some big rocks back there. There's people back there taking family pictures, playing on those rocks. Listening to the kids is just awesome. There was a whole wedding party, did their pictures back there in that green space. Cause we don't have much green space in our neighborhood. And many bring their dogs there and walk them because there's no other place to go. These kids need this park and they need a safe park, not having to put up with being careful with buses and big trucks. Please don't put that road through our park. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Right, is there anyone else that would like to comment during oral presentations going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Do you have comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Firstly, I would like to thank those that came to the Ward 1 and 2, our first joint council meeting. It was great to have you. We, I have ward meetings, Mr. Bozen and I, every final Saturday of the month for wards 1 and 2 at Sidecar Coffee. You don't, you can just come in and ask a question. It's pointless to be like in office hours. For people in this neighborhood, I just spoke with upfront name. James. And he's going to be talking with you guys so we can meet this week. This is a city, obviously a school board thing, but I want to hear more comments and hear more about what you have to say to see what I can do to help in making some type of resolution happen here. So hopefully we'll be setting up a meeting for this Saturday at some point, somewhere in the neighborhood. And I'll come by as a council member to hear a little bit more about what's going on from your perspectives. Thank you again for being here and sharing us, sharing with me what you have concerns about. I look forward to seeing you this week.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I wanted to share that the Ward 4 Town Hall meeting will take place the 3rd Thursday, which is the 20th, thank you, of February at 6 o'clock at the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center. And we will have in attendance either via Zoom or in person, the new owner of All-In Grocers. So pass the word so that the community can come out and share their concerns and ideas for how to ensure that we are there and keeping that particular business vibrant.
Yeah, I don't know if owner yet, but the person is in conversation with it as well. Right, Mr. Bozen.
Just, just a quick note that we've got some ice forecast for Wednesday and the park department has put some sidewalk sand at Hope Martin Park. So I don't know if we could put that out on our, on our city site that, that sand's available. I would sure appreciate it, just to get, get the word out. Because I, with this ice forecast, I had three people contact me today and ask me about the sidewalk sand situation. I just want to let them know that we do have some available at Hope Martin Park.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
A motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Bills Payment 1A1 for January 27th in the amount of $4,59,639.39. And for February 3rd, $3,289,320.76.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just really quickly, uh, cause it's been 45 minutes, but just really quickly, is Mr. Chris Pett here? Chris Pett is a plant maintenance mechanic foreman at the Waste Management. Effective date tomorrow. So Chris, if you're watching, congratulations. And Jim Burbidge, Jim, would you please stand really quickly? Jim is the general manager for the Waterloo Convention Center. He's come in with incredible energy. He's out there working. He's making sure that that convention center is filled with people. He's new to the job, so we just want to say thank you much for your incredible efforts. And he is a new board member for Main Street, which Mrs. Rucker is here as well. So thank you so much. And Bev Smith, I don't see her, and she's been named to the Community Development Board as well. So thank you very much for your additional service, sir. All right, let's go. Someone take number one, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the 2025 budget amendment? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025 budget amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, approve publication of notice of public hearings for the proposed funding recommendations set forth by the Housing Authority Board for the five-year capital funds action plan for fiscal years 2024 through 2028.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the action plan by our housing board? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the proposed funding recommendations for a five-year capital funds action plan for fiscal years 2024 through 2028 as proposed by the Housing Authority Board for maintenance and improvement of the existing housing complex at Ridgeway Towers.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to compliment Ms. Viesley too. You've come on, you've been an innovator and you found additional funding. You are partnering with more multi-agencies than we have in the past. So I want to thank you and your team for all your efforts. Number three.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to receive and file proof of publication for notice of public hearing for fiscal year 2023 Sunnyside Creek Improvements Wet Tension Pond and Channel Stabilization Project Contract Number 1062.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item on the agenda tonight? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. That motion has been made with a second. Council questions?
Just happy to see this move forward.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer it to city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Our engineer's estimate was two million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Our first bidder was Aaron Crane Construction LLC of Manchester, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one million, seven hundred four thousand, eighty-two dollars and ninety cents. Our second bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Rhinebeck, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars, thirty-nine cents. Our third bidder was Connolly Construction Incorporated of Piasta, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, nine cents. And our final bidder was Boomerang Corporation of Anels, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two million, two hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty cents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could someone take number four?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate an eight-foot public utility easement along the east side of lots one and two, and an eight-foot public utility easement along the west side of lots five and six of Woodland Knolls Edition, located at two twenty-seven South Hackett Road, north of the intersection of South Hackett Road and Oak Press Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The public meeting, anyone with public comments? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and approve the recommendation of approval of the planning, programming, and zoning commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to receive.
At one end, you hurry up and cut me off and move forward, man.
I was reclaiming your time. Motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request to vacate an eight-foot public utility easement along the east sides of lots one and two and the eight-foot public utility easement along the west side of lots five and six of Woodland Knolls Edition at two twenty-seven South Hackett Road, north of the intersection of South Hackett Road and Oak Press Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Council questions?
Just a quick one, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious on how we get buildings and concrete and everything that was built on that easement originally. I'm just looking at the aerial photos, you know.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So sometimes people do things incorrectly or without proper permits. So we are going through, drafting staff is actually working with us to go through and identify where we have these easements with problems on them. Or in this case, there's no reason to keep the easement. There's no utilities in there that are being impacted, so we're gonna vacate it. But we'll be working to correct some of these as we're going to more digital maps for all of our information.
Thank you.
Cleaning up.
Important that we're cleaning it up.
They didn't have us here. All right, let me see. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion been made a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Could someone take number five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I can make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication notice of public hearing for demolition site contract services, contract number D twenty-twenty-five dash oh one dash oh three P.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right, the hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm Flo, Forest Dilibook, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I have a couple of questions about this. This is not city ground. It's WDC ground, and we are going to clear it for them. I believe the WDC receives a lot of their funding from the gaming money. When we voted gaming in, we were told the gaming money would help the residents of Waterloo. This looks like rather than helping, it's adding because we are going to clear it for them. No matter what the project is, it is not help. It has added financial burden to the taxpayers of Waterloo. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I was gonna wait till, I was gonna wait till public comments and then have staff.
I can answer that if you want me to.
As soon as we close out from this, don't go far. It'll be approximately ten seconds, maybe. So is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I can motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Mr. Schrader?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. This property is owned by the WDC Waterloo Development Corporation. But the agreement that the City of Waterloo previously approved with WDC is for the city to handle the demo actions, but it's being paid for by WDC. So they will pay entirely for the demolition of their building. There was three different properties, two of which are already under demo contract. And then this is the third property. It had a few more problems that delayed it, but funded by WDC.
All right, thank you. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Our estimate for this project was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had three bidders. The first one was Lehman Trucking and Excavating Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars. Second bidder was DW Zinzur Company of Walford, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And our final bidder was Lansing Brothers Construction Company Incorporated of Luxembourg, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Sir, do you want me to read the next two together or separately?
Can take them together.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a ward of bid in part to DW Zinzur Company, Inc. of Walford, Iowa, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the demolition and site clearance, contract number D twenty-twenty-five oh one dash oh three P. Part one, property located at one eighteen Sycamore Street, WDC-owned property, partial non-rackum demo and partial rackum demo, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents, and also adopting a resolution approving the ward of bid in part to Lehman Trucking and Excavating in Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the demolition and site clearance services, contract number D twenty-twenty-five dash oh one dash oh three P, part two, for properties located at three oh nine East Second Street, eleven oh three Commercial Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. When you see the word rackum, that is removal of asbestos-containing materials. So not only is this being demolished, but it has to be handled in a certain way when there's asbestos materials in there as well. So this is going to make this area much more safe for everyone in and around that area. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, someone take number six?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and ask for the demolition and site clearance services, contract number D dash twenty-twenty-five dash zero one dash zero five P.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was eighty-five thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Cedar Valley Excavating of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Our second bidder was Lehman Trucking and Excavating Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was sixty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars. Our third bidder was DW Zinzur Company of Walford, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Our next bidder was Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. And our final bidder was Walker Reclaim and Demo LLC of Iowa Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security, and their bid amount was seventy-one thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a ward of bid to Lehman Trucking and Excavating, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the demolition and site clearance services, contract number D dash twenty-twenty-five dash zero one dash zero five P for properties located at thirteen thirty-five Mulberry Street, seven twenty-four Lincoln Street, four eighteen Oak Avenue, one ten Chestnut Street, three eighteen Brattonover Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
All right, thank you. Could someone take one through three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, in conjunction with the airfield payment maintenance management system project, FAA AIP grant number three dash nineteen dash zero zero nine four dash zero XX, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number two is adopting a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Anderson Bogart of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars, in conjunction with engineering services for traffic signal pulse standardization, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number three is adopting a resolution approving a licensing agreement with Iowa Northern Railway Company and Iowa Corporation, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, in conjunction with the Laporte Road Improvements Phase Two project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Is there anyone that have questions on these three items? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Do you want me to take number four by itself or?
I would.
All right, number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with InTrust of Warrenville, Illinois, in the amount of one million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars, in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three construction of a fiber premise feeder distribution backbone network project, contract number one zero eight eight, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. We'll go to the gentleman, and then I believe we have Courtney Violette on. And then we'll go to Mr. Bozen, if no other public comments.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I guess my question is that we keep coming up with these figures that we have to pay. Was that not all in the original planning of all this? And if it was, why doesn't it state that? That this is a payment we need to make because it was pre-planned?
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
We'd like to know that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else with comments? Mr. Bozen, you mind if I go to Mr. Violette for a quick presentation? Courtney, I believe you're on with us. I thought. I had to take my phone and zoom it in.
Mike Reagan from InTrust is on as well.
All right, so Mike, Courtney, whoever's giving us an update on these current costs. Could you let us know what's happening?
Yeah, so our contracts have always been annual. So this is for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year for the construction management, project management services for the fiber to the home and the backbone feeder distribution project.
Right, and the conversation about costs and what was budgeted?
The comment about the, I'm sorry.
The gentleman wanted to know, this is an annual contract, which you stated, but this is an annual contract, right? So this was already budgeted for?
Yes, it was. So this is a three-year project. This is our second year of construction.
All right, and Eric, you want to give some comment, too, before Mr. Bozen asks his questions?
Eric Loggi, Waterloo Fiber, General Manager. Michael pretty much summed it up. This is for twenty-twenty-five design, engineering, construction inspection for the project for both the utility and the backbone, so.
And what's different? What's different about the amount and how the goal, has the goal shifted a little bit from the end of twenty-six to?
Construction is going a little bit ahead of schedule due to weather and due to us just having really good, good luck with our boring crews. So the timeline is a little bit compressed. However, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong. The design and the engineering level of effort has not changed. So a little bit of those fees coming off the back end are kind of being brought forward to accommodate for the timeline being shortened.
So.
That's right.
So the, the, it was twenty-six, beginning of twenty-seven, but there's a potential that the majority of the boring and stuff can be done by the end of twenty twenty-five now.
So, well, yeah, there's a lot of factors there, but potentially, yeah, several months early.
Barring freezing rain.
Yeah, and we asked Intrust to do an analysis on the cost savings and that, and there was several hundred thousand dollars of cost savings just from Magellan's agreement by compressing that timeline and accelerating it.
And within this project, I don't know if it's you or Randy, but how many, how many millions or hundreds of thousands have we saved thus far? Do you know that number offhand?
So over three million under budget. That's not including, if you take into account our ten percent, I think it is contingency. We're about eleven million under the budget.
Alright, thank you. You probably don't want to leave. Let's go to a counsel comment. I know Mr. Bosin, Bosin is anxious to ask a couple of questions.
Chomping at the bit, sir.
Alright.
Well, my, my concern is, is the amount, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a month. And in my opinion, this is an incredible large amount of money per month. That's why we get it to one point five million. And then so when we do our monthly breakdown, you know, project management, project engineering, construction management includes one construction manager. Task four, construction inspections include two market construction inspectors, one inspection for four construction crews. But we're talking about bringing on more crews. So will this fifty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars a month raise if we bring in more crews? If we, if we're trying to accelerate this?
If they accelerate it and they bring on additional crews and they get out of sight of the ratio, then yeah, we'll bring on. That was part of the analysis with the cost savings, but they'll have to bring on additional inspectors.
I mean, because our goal is to get, put more linear feet in than we are currently, correct?
Yep.
I'm not going to talk about how many linear feet, but our goal is to increase that.
Correct.
And to increase that, we have to have more crews.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, and that's, so that, that fifty-one thousand seven ninety-four is a variable.
Yeah, it could, it would potentially increase, yeah.
And that would have to come back before the council for approval?
Yep.
Okay.
And that would potentially start in April if all goes to plan.
Alright, well, yeah, it, it was just, some of these tasks that are, that are laid out in here almost seem like tasks that we should have our own personnel doing. There's a number of these tasks in here that seem pretty, pretty standard tasks for, for your utility as it's growing. Having our own people do. That's why I was curious and why, why we're reaching out. So my next question. Let's say we bring on, we're, we're scheduled to do X amount of linear feet based on, on this analysis. And something happens that, that we don't bring, that we're not doing. You know, let's just say, I won't do an arbitrary number, but we're not doing that linear feet. We're having trouble getting construction crews or something happened to the construction crews, so they're no longer here. Does that decrease this amount then?
Yeah, so I asked that very question to Intrust. So if they don't meet that number, then they will go back and redo this proposal and decrease that cost. And essentially spread it out over the full three years.
So there won't, there won't be a standard decrease. We'll have, they'll have to go back and renegotiate a decreased cost?
Yep.
Because I, I understand, and I had a lengthy meeting with Mr. Bennett today, and I understand a lot more than I did before I got there this morning. But that was my main concern is that if we're, if we're saying we're going to get this many linear feet and we want to bring on more crews to this many linear feet and then all of a sudden we're only doing this many linear feet and we're contracted a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, yep.
Does it fluctuate?
Not to me.
No, I mean, if, if that does happen, does it fluctuate?
That was my question, my last question. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
How many crews do we have actively now?
Right now, maybe four. It fluctuates with the weather right now at the moment.
Okay. And you'd like to have, how many?
I'm not sure exactly how many crews were part of that analysis, and I'm not sure, I don't know if that's considered proprietary or not, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions? Roll tight.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
Five, six and seven.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo for corrective final plat of North Crossing Fourth Edition and a First Amendment of the Owner's Statement of Deed to Dedication and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. A resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Service in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand to perform an on-call general planning and project coordination and surveying and plating adjacent to the Waterloo Regional Airport located at twenty-seven ninety Livingston Lane and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document. And a resolution approving a professional service agreement with TerraCon Consultants Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa to perform a demolition observation of asbestos consultation services and air monitoring related to the demolition of Saint Mary's Church and school site located at two one two seven East Fourth Street and Saint Mary's Villa at one two east, one two three East Parker Street and authorizing the city planner to execute that document.
Second.
That motion has been made with second. Any questions on these three items?
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I guess, what's the amount that we're going to pay for number seven?
For those services, Eric, that particular piece? So, so what's your other questions to? You got other questions too, sir?
I don't think so.
Alright, Eric, you want to come up and talk about, talk about this and then?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. So this is professional services for demolition monitoring and air quality monitoring. Because the demolition that's been done to date at the Saint Mary's site did uncover asbestos, which was not supposed to be there, was supposed to be tested and abated and already removed. But there was some hidden asbestos that's been hit and disturbed, so we've been working closely with the DNR. A change order was earlier on in the agenda to work with the demo contractor. But both the demo contractor, city staff and the DNR thought it would be a good idea to bring in a monitoring professional to make sure that the disturbed asbestos is handled properly. It's fee-based, so there's not a, a total that is associated with that. There's a, a fee chart that's included within the agreement that is hourly-based, just kind of a approximation based on best guess of what we think amount of time that it's probably going to take. It'll probably be in the range of twenty thousand dollars by the time it's all said and done, but it's not a exact dollar amount. It's a fee schedule.
And just to make folks aware, when they were demolishing the site, they found asbestos-containing materials. We had different testing companies that tested different parts of it with different contracts. We had the group come in that's doing the abatement. And once the construction crews came in with the demolition, they found that there was asbestos-containing materials that were there. So when we mentioned rackum a little bit earlier, when you do rackum, you have to do certain things to that material and, and it's also charged differently at the landfill as well. So that charge is significantly more. And so with this monitoring group, we want to make sure that, one, the air testing quality is where it needs to be. But number two, making sure that those parts that need to be, that be done rackum is being done that way. And those part that has, does not need to be, is not done that way because that makes the charges go up exponentially. And so we've had to work pretty quickly to get this taken care of. So Eric, Rudy and staff and your communication with the EPA or the DNR, we appreciate it. But the company Zinzer is fortunate because they also are a demolition company that deals with rackum material. And so that's where we were fortunate. But that place needs to be torn down immediately, and it's been a priority for staff to make sure we do it the right way. So, counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I've asked this question before, and I don't know if I've got an answer to my satisfaction or not. But when we hire somebody or the city hires somebody to do the initial inspections on these asbestos-containing buildings, what percentage of these do we come back with and they find additional? It seems like we're always getting additional things and charges for things that are already, we've already paid money to have them, you know, consulted in services and, and paid all these fees. Is that common? Is this, is that always going to be the case?
Schrader with staff. Unfortunately, it is kind of common. There are elements that are hidden. And even though they do their best to, like, asbestos wrap in, on pipes, hidden in walls, they will make pilot holes in the walls investigating for it. But it's flooring, we, we've seen where there was areas that were tested and negative, but then there were areas that they didn't realize were, they thought were all of the same material, but it wasn't. So then it, there was a portion of that that was assumed to be negative the same as what tested as negative, and then it wasn't. So it's, it's not an exact science, unfortunately. So we, we do see that, that there's times where asbestos gets missed. Not, I, I couldn't say for a percentage because we demo quite a few buildings and.
But I'm saying, is there, is there companies that are better at it than others? Are we, are we, I mean, if we have the same company testing and they continue to find problems later on, is there somebody else that can be hired to do that more accurately?
I would say the, the answer to that is probably yes. But I think we will have to have some further discussion on how we would go about incorporating that into specs since, I mean, we do have wording in our specs that provide for lowest responsible bidder. So we could certainly, you know, look at disqualifying bidders if we think they're not responsible. But what, outside of that, where we don't have anyone disqualified, you know, we don't have a lot of legwork to, you know, to stand on to say, you know, you're low bidder, but we're not going to give it to you.
Well, I'll tell, I'm pissed they missed this much, just to be completely blunt about it. Challenge is, how long is Saint Mary's? It's a hundred, hundred something year old, eighty something year old building. And you're right, things, things do happen. I mean, like when we were demolishing Chamberlain, we get in there and we find some bombshells, right? Like, it, it's not a perfect science, but I'm pissed that this much was missed. And we had separate companies to do it, and both of the ones that they did had additional asbestos in there. So the challenge is, right now, we have a situation where it needs to be taken care of. We're hearing about freezing rain coming in here pretty soon. But with this monitoring portion, it is to make sure that, I won't say that, we just need to make sure that this price doesn't go exponentially high because we're rackum, rackum something that shouldn't be. So this is our monitoring for this. But yeah, it, great question. It's ludicrous, but we still got to move forward and, and get this done. And so that's why we have the observation.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
And it's, I think it's important to remember that this is not coming out of our general fund, correct? I mean, this is Rudy's, most of it's block grant money, isn't it?
Yeah, but is the testing, yeah, but there, so the majority of it's coming from there. But they've already, they budgeted X amount of dollars already. No, we're not over it yet because the bid came in a little bit lower. But if there's continuation of increases and if that project turns to all rackum, then it's going to exceed that, and we'll have to think of other ways to be able to participate. The testing is coming from?
The, the testing that's been done to date and the demo contract and the change order that was approved earlier is all anticipated to be coming through the HUD funds through community development. This monitoring one is anticipated to come from elsewhere because of the limitation on the HUD funds.
But, but do we have in that federal grant that we had on for brownfields and other areas, is that close enough to our brownfields that, that that money could be used or not for, for this, for this project? Okay.